When speaking, make sure your microphone's on so people can hear. Everyone receive copy of the agenda? Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Support by Ms. Chick. All in favor? Is there any questions on that motion? All in favor and keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have. All to the public, anyone wishing to address the planning commission, please step up to the podium, turn the mic on, state your name and address. You have three minutes if you'd like to address the planning commission. Mrs. McNamara, I hope you make sure the microphone's on. Um, let me try some. Try to, try it out.
How about this?
Thank you. That was my fault. This is your fault.
All right. This is about the mountainous business and I'm a little bit big on it. So I had some questions, so I'll give you their bigger questions. There's a new road being proposed. I was reading all the papers that I saw online. First big question, was, when this property was first proposed for development, was this road in the proposal? I don't know the answer to that. You have to do. So I didn't get an answer to that, but I agree. And if it was proposed, was it proposed to go through the wetlands that it looks like it's going through to me? I looked at the report online, or reply. It looks like hundreds of trees will be removed by these mature trees. So I saw that the road is going through the wetlands. Has it been, and this is just to my lines, I know that trees smoke up a lot of water, had it been addressed? The issue, how much water will then be on this wetland after the trees are moved? It's already wetting. After the trees are removed, how much water will it be? And when this road is put in, where will the buildings go if this, if this is even And how the buildings are going on this? Oh, I have another question about the wetlands. It says something about, that it's wetlands, but it's not recognized as wetlands. If you all could please help me with the difference in that, I don't understand it. And those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people who wish to do their stuff?
Hello, David Ford, 55, taking on the road. Happy to do it everybody. Just a couple things. I want to welcome our new member, Mr. Wyatt, the planning commission board. In the agenda tonight, there's a, I was very happy to see in the discussion of the proposed community development work plan that there are two things in there. Agricultural production preservation is one, and future land use planning. I'm very encouraged to see that as part of the goals for 2018. When it comes to future land use map and plan review, I was hoping the planning commission might want to consider establishing an area that's all the preservation's on, wanting more of them in our communities, especially in areas where we have our largest concentration of farm properties. Other communities have done it, doesn't preclude development in those areas, but it just lets the development community know which areas we are really not particularly interested in having map pursuit, which would then push the development in the areas that we would like to see that. And lastly, it was very encouraging also to see the riders' rules of orders, simplify from this as part of the package because it's a great tool for helping everybody have their say, show respect to one another, and get the meetings done quickly. So now that that's been issued with this plan, please, any more?
Any, any other, would anyone else like to address the planning commission? Seeing none, oh, two clarifications from commissioners. Mrs. McNamara, I don't know the answer to all your questions. Many of them, maybe some that we've, as a commission tonight, I can only suggest that let us go through our agenda, and perhaps some of those might be addressed. And at the, at the end of, you have something that's not addressed, possibly you can, you can bring up on the final call, and I'm more than willing to talk to you after the meeting if, please, anything else. Any, any other clarifications? Ms. Chick?
I have a fair question, but I wanted to know, Mrs. McNamara, is there no such thing as a good question here? Any question, good question. Thank you for asking.
Any other clarifications? It will move on. Correspondents, I did receive an email today that I will have Mr. Sosecki read to the
The email is from Senator Shrank, Chair of the Land Preservation Committee, Justin Herman, dated today. Starts, "I know you're a supporter of land preservation as I am, and I appreciate all the planning commission does to protect our community. To that end, would you please, at the beginning of the meeting tonight, announce that the Land Preservation Committee is holding an open house conservation of land preservation at 7:00 p.m. on February 8th at the township hall. Refreshments will be provided. She indicates that the supplies are attached. We can't set that present right now." Okay, okay. We'll monitor our guests. And includes, "We will need as much support as we can, ask for the support for work. Hope to see you with the other planning commissioners at the meeting." Thank you, Senator Shrank.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence? Seeing none, move on. There's no public hearing tonight. Reports from committees, board of trustees, report, Ms. Chick.
The Board met January 8th. Our planner, Paul Olympus, gave a presentation on the proposal for the plan review and associated costs of $27,500 to be created to install this over two years. 14,250 has also requested for zoning work and amendments. The Board denied funding for the master plan review of the 43, and approved the funding for the zoning ordinance amendments. The supervisor suggested the Board may take another look at the master plan proposed for in about three months. The zoning amendment regarding coal and other terraces, parroted porch, and gang of those approved. The Board also approved a five-year lease of the second point to lawn net, living soon, and lush amount of cards in the north fifteen. Lawn net will do the $97,000 villa upstairs to create office spaces with the township covering half the cost. Contract is still under review, although well construction will begin in a few weeks. The Board has discussed a proposal for the DDA to take over management of 75 parkers. Question is stable, the Board asking for additional information. The Board approved Juanas requesting the official shut-in of 75 parkers in the area. ZDA acquainted to make, and they will was acquainted to the Board until the 75 was acquainted as an alternate. I did also mention to the planner, the point, sorry, the planning commission had the leaders who must be, recommended that they do not participate in any concept meetings or negotiations within the planning, roads, and developers, or any of the one, you know, the crowded record building, and also suggested that the Board take that their policy is the policy they are providing for. So, I hope that that's covered. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. ZDA, this, he is no longer resident, so we'll have a report. Staff, Ms. Burke?
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning consultant, Mr. Lippens?
The approval of this ordinance was work that the planning commission recommended was mentioned, so we took forward to starting that as part of our 2018 work plan. And other than that, I think we can discuss the work plan under the business agenda.
Thank you. Parkinson-Rice, Mr. Acquino?
Yes, thank you. The Dog Bark Park, which is in, off of Jennings Road at the old football complex, is open from dawn till dusk, so I wanted to encourage use from residents. And then also the community garden, if you have interest in volunteering in that or for space, please contact Jennifer Delisle, or Jennifer Carlisle at our township office at 449-2880, extension 18, to request a spot for this coming eighteen season or volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown planning group, Ms. Infante?
Will convene for the first time this year.
Thank you. Okay, to unfinished business, I obtain Jomar Private, Jomar Drive, private road, excuse me, north of, east North Territory Road in east of US 23. Mr. Lippens, how would you like to proceed? Would you like to do your part first? Would you like, should we have the applicant come forth?
I can provide a brief summary. We also have the township manager here, who may be able to address some specific concerns. The applicant is here to make a presentation and also address planning commissioner concerns as he may. So in, summaries is followed. So the township reviews private roads under private road requirements, and planning commission makes approval based on a list of standards. And those standards are included in our review letter dated January 9th. This is a revision of a review letter we issued almost a year ago, or almost exactly a year ago, in which some additional details were requested. At this time, so we look at the roadway surface, the turnaround, the connections between the right-of-way, and specific standards of the county road commission, underground drainage, The, how the, the road will be signed, consistent with the manual of uniform traffic control devices, and then access egress drainage for maintenance and public utilities. Additionally, we've noted that the township also has standards for wetland approval and landmark tree mitigation that are typically triggered by site plan review. However, it's important to know that under the standards for public or private road improvements, planning commission is able to place any conditions on this approval that are consistent with protecting public health, safety, and welfare. So we are making a recommendation tonight that planning commission apply the tree mitigation standard to this site, and that's based on the, the fact that the natural features really promote the health and welfare of the township, and that those, that objective is also served by the tree mitigation section of the ordinance. So I think the other thing that's very important to note is that this project will be required to get permits from MDEQ for its wetland impacts, as well as all permits from county road and I, commission and other county permits. I know that the engineering review has a summary of the permits required, so I might let Marcus go into detail on that permitting, also provide additional detail on, on any drainage requirements. I think our recommendation tonight is that substantively, we feel that the township requirements have been met, with the exception that we are recommending a reasonable condition that all landmark trees are mitigated and new trees are planted in, in a manner that may also contribute to the future site development screening and landscaping requirements. And we do feel like this is permitted based on the private road review requirements that allow planning commission to put reasonable conditions on a permit. If planning commission does take action tonight, we're recommending administrative approval, and I would note that we would, we would make a report at a future planning commission meeting to let you know how those, that condition was met, and if any changes happened as a result of other permits that were required, the project would be required to come back to planning commission for review on substantive changes as well. So I wanted to really explain the process, provide a summary of the project. I don't know, Marcus, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, I'll let the applicant make the presentation, and I can answer questions after that.
You finished, Mr. McNamara? Okay.
I am finished.
Okay. Mr. McNamara, you, you would like to go after the applicant? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, because I think they can, I mean, as the design engineer can probably answer a lot of those questions, and I can jump in if needed, but they can explain the detail of their proposal.
Okay, thank you. Would a representative from the development, please come forward and state your name and...
Yep, thank you, Mr. Tierman. My name is Rob Wagner. I'm with Midwestern Consulting. Just talk a little bit about the history of this project. We designed this private road back in the early 2000s, obtained approvals and permits, so this road proposal has been around a long time before your ordinance has changed. Then the economy hit, so it kind of went on hold for several years, and about a year ago, we were here in front of you, didn't quite have the detail needed for you to, to hear us out or, or make a decision. So in the last year, we did some things. We met with the Washtenaw County Drain Commissioner's Office to talk about stormwater management requirements. We had a pre-application meeting where then we went and did infiltration tests and found where the best infiltrating soils were along the, the private road. So the plans that you have in front of you tonight, consider those infiltrating soils, and they, you know, provide bio-retention in accordance with the county requirements. Excuse me, Mr. Redd. Yes. Can you make sure you can provide some of that in your proposals? Yes. Okay. And you are right, we are needing a wetland permit because we're crossing the wetlands. We do have an application into that MDEQ, and I, and I know that part of their permit process requires a public notice, so neighbors within 300 feet or so will be notified of that public hearing, which would happen probably in about 30 or 60 days. Regarding the, the trees, the tree mitigation, we had, had not up until today proposed tree mitigation because it's, you know, for a private road, isn't required by the ordinance, but we do acknowledge the, the letter that the, that your planning consultant wrote. We wanted to let you know it. We didn't propose it, one, because it's not required by the ordinance, two, it is, it's not a, it's not a minor cost to the, to the owner. Jim Kugler, by the way, is here. He's the, the developer, the owner of the project. I forgot to mention that, but, I mean, it's in the neighborhood of $100,000 to, to mitigate trees for the ordinance, so anything that he, we could do to work with you on that issue. One thing that comes to mind is if we came up with a tree mitigation plan, we may plant them in an area where a future site needs to build a detention pond or a building or something like that, so we'd be basically, you know, planting or mitigating twice for trees. But having said that, if there's, if there's a way we can work with the, the planning consultant administratively on that, to minimize either known mitigation or, or maybe minimize the mitigation since it's not a requirement of the ordinance or stage it over time, something like that, we'd like to talk, talk about that with you a little bit. Having said that, I didn't have too much to say. We did design the road for the Northfield Township ordinances, and we, we do plan to obtain all the permits necessary. We're here to answer questions.
Thank you. Do you have anything additional at this time, Mr. McNamara?
Yeah, I would just add, the way the private road, the section of the ordinance that deals with the private road is worded, it's a little bit different order than for a site plan. So for a site plan, the planning commission would review and approve a final site plan, and then the next step would be detailed engineering review, to work out some of the details that we're talking about tonight. It's the reverse of that for private road. So it's very explicit in, in, in the ordinance that all the engineering issues essentially need to be worked out prior to the planning commission taking action. And we believe that they have been. It's in our report as well, and the planning report, that they meet all of the standards of the township ordinance. The piece that's left is the permitting from the MDEQ and the county, and I guess, you know, those need to be in hand before construction, but those agencies typically require township blessing of the plan before they'll take formal action. So there is an order of operations there. If anything came out of, for example, the wetland permit that required a realignment of the road, applicant will need to come back. That's, that wouldn't be considered a minor change. So they understand that, agree. So that would be the order. Based on our review, it meets all the township ordinances. Once the planning commission approves it, they still have several steps before they can start construction, including the, the wetland permitting, the public dollars, et cetera.
Mr. McNamara, can you refer me the section that you're referring to on the private roads in the ordinance?
Yes, it's in section 36-719. It's right, I don't have it printed in front of me, but it's right near the beginning of that section, that talks about the planning commission shall essentially confirm that the application meets the township standards, engineering details.
Thank you.
And the last thing I guess I would clarify on the wetlands, and this will be dictated by the DEQ as part of their review, and I don't remember the terminology that the, that was referred to, but there's regulated and unregulated wetlands, and there's criteria for that based on size, quality, et cetera. And so there may or may not be mitigation requirements. We don't believe for this project that there will be. And so that's what, thinking, I don't remember the terminology, but unregulated would not require that the wetland be reestablished elsewhere. So that's what we think is going to be the determination of the DEQ, but we'll find out for sure through that process. And that's all I have.
Either yourself or Mr. Lippens, can you specifically give me that section regarding the approval process under this 36-719? As far as the planning commission's role?
Yeah, I'm currently looking at it, but I believe it's 13-719-F.
F?
I believe so.
Excuse me.
And I'm, I have the ordinance open, and I'm, I'm going to there now, so I can confirm that.
Thank you. If you can, if everyone can bear with me too, I'd like to go to it.
Are you saying permit approval procedure? Is that what you're referring to for F?
Yes.
Mr. Lippens?
But I'm still not there, so.
I just want to make sure I'm reading the right one, too.
Yeah, permit approval procedure is F. But did you want to look at the title?
So, so just for my clarification, Mr. Lippens, I'm looking at 36-719-F3, correct?
Yeah, but item two, F, F, F2 specifically says that the township engineer shall review and report to planning commission that it meets all...
Correct.
Dimensional and right-of-way requirements. But that's the section I was referring to.
Correct. So our, but as far as the planning commission is concerned, it falls under step three, or number three, under that same article. Am I correct, Mr. Lippens? It says the planning, planning commission shall impose such conditions on the approval of, of the permit as it deems necessary to achieve the intent and objectives of this chapter, which may include, but not limited to, conditions suggested by the township engineer.
Correct. And the intent for the chapter is at the, the front of the chapter, which states that the, the intent, you have access to property and that, in such a way that promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the public.
Okay, so Mr. Lippens, my question then is, doesn't that lend itself to section 36-723? Specifically, which is natural features preservation?
So yes, you are correct, and that is the, the reasoning that I provide in justifying the planning commission to require mitigation of trees as a condition of their approval this evening.
Correct.
Should planning commission entertain that?
So as I'm, and I'm asking you this to be very clear to not only the planning commission but the public and the applicant, as I see it, this is, this is a plan review for this private road, but it doesn't necessarily negate any of the requirements under the natural features preservation, am I correct?
That's the determination that we, we met, that we, that we made in review. I do feel that 37 landmark trees is significant, and I, when I look at it, I look at, you know, a tree stand as, as also being a significant natural feature, and that modification to that should, you know, at least require some consideration.
Right.
So we, you know, if, if this proposal was saying there were only two landmark trees, and this is kind of the new information we have on this review, we might suggest that because the private road recommendations don't specifically require mitigation, we, we could look at it a little differently. But I, I would describe this as a significant number of trees that are impacted.
Yes. As would I, and, and I guess I'm taking this opportunity, I'm, I'm going forward with my questions so that the other commissioners could follow my train of thought on the whole thing. And I did have some concerns, or it's not concerns, it's more procedural on, on our part, because if you look at natural features preservation, there's the whole list of natural features, which is one, A through H, that you would need to consider because we are, you have already spoke about landmark trees, there could be woodlands considered, it could be, in this specific case is what I'm referring to, ground, groundwater recharge areas, I don't know, because it's, nothing's been determined with that, and wetlands being the first one on that list, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if we, if we as a planning commission... Okay, so if we, as a planning commission, are to do our due diligence and enforce the ordinance and consider everything that needs to be done under this. This is quite an involved section in the ordinance for the planning commission. There's a lot to consider. One part of it leads to another part. There's, for projects that require plan review, then we go into, at least one natural feature is determined to exist on the site and a natural features impact statement must be provided. Was that done?
So we did not go into that level of detail because it is a private road. And it's not a site plan review. So while I feel like there's a logical nexus, it is a different standard of review. But it is, you know, subject to planning commission's discussion tonight. I will note that because MDQ review is required, because there are a number of permits, there are, there's kind of another level of review for these that we feel like is built into the private road process. So that's the basis for our recommendation, not to require at this time a natural features impact statement. However, that's what we're discussing tonight.
Right. And that's why I bring it up at this time. Because I want to make sure that all the requirements that are necessary for the planning commission are brought at this, from this point. And so I guess I am saying, I don't see that, how you have a different standard for private roads when we are considering portions of all these requirements. So to me, my personal opinion is that perhaps there are some issues that may need to be further looked at or discussed, especially with the applicant. At this time, you know, this time last year, when the initial submittal was given, there was a whole list of things that needed to be addressed. So a year has passed. There's been quite some time, although there is, there has been a lot of the issues addressed from the first review. But I want to make sure that us as a planning commission are addressing everything that we need to address. So it's my opinion that I think we need to revisit this and perhaps myself or have a discussion with you or the administration or in combination, whatever. But my personal opinion is that I would like to see us go through any questions that the rest of the commission has on any details tonight. And my suggestion would be to table it for a later meeting, pending discussion of some of the requirements. But at this time, hopefully my fellow commissioners are following where I'm coming. But if anyone has any other questions, I guess we'll start with Ms. Infante.
Thank you. And following your logic and also repraising what one of the residents mentioned, the road, I understand that there are different requirements for the private road, but the road isn't going to nowhere. So something is going to be built on the road. And it seems to me that we'd need to keep in mind the impact of this decision on the next decision that we have to make. If we remove this many trees, basically what the resident said, when you change the landscape, then you've changed the whole ballgame when it comes to building on that road. In other words, we can approve a road, but that's not all we're doing. You don't just approve a road. It's for something. So I'm just a little concerned because I feel like I'm in the dark looking at these plans and being held to a different standard of requirements when you know the next step is going to be held to the other standard. Perhaps I'm completely ignorant, I'm new to this, but I was very confused by that. And I hugely appreciate the chair bringing these issues up.
Thank you. Ms. Chick, I think, is next.
So, Mr. Lippens, can you explain why there is a difference between requirements for a private road and any other project?
I guess the simplest way to state it is that they're related to different state acts for approval process. You know, the site plan is the zoning enabling act and it's land use development. The private road really is covered under land division. And there's different regulations that apply to it. So it is, you know, functionally a different type of approval. And so that's why it's under, follows a different procedure. As Marcus was explaining, you know, because it's a road, that's why the engineering has to be done upfront. And those approvals have to happen. And then there's a different standard of approval from the state. Whereas when we approve a site plan, you know, you really are the approval body on a site plan. You know, with the effect, you know, of course, there are other agencies that approve. But from a land use perspective, you know, you're controlling your zoning ordinance. So, you know, I do feel like there is a logical nexus to other parts of your zoning ordinance. And we could certainly look at that tonight. I appreciate the discussion. But from the perspective of, you know, if there weren't these environmental issues on a private road, the review process really is, are the engineering standards met? And if so, we approve because it's under a different governing, you know, governance act. Marcus, can you help with that a little bit or concur?
No, I would disagree. I mean, there's the private road section of the Northfield Township zoning ordinance and that lays out a different procedural path than for a site development.
So are we overreaching as a planning commission if we're asking for more requirements than what is required for a private road?
I don't feel like, if the planning commission this evening makes a decision to table requesting more information, my recommendation would be to table to a specific meeting date and we'll provide more recommendation. I think it's, you know, reasonable to request that information. And certainly I'm comfortable with the recommendation we've made this evening to specifically require tree mitigation.
That hasn't been a decision by this board yet. No. He's, I think Mr. Lippens is putting it out there that
But that's what we're doing.
As an option, correct.
If, yeah, if, I was saying, dependent on your position.
So you're saying that these other issues regarding the wetlands and the treatment of trees and the other possible environmental impact of putting a private road in there just following the state regulations, that the MDQ and the other entities are going to look into that? And so if they come back and say, the MDQ and say, no, this isn't possible. We can't do that. What is the action after that?
So Marcus summarized that pretty well. So if those permits are not obtained or if in the process of obtaining those permits substantive changes are made to the road, like where it's located, that, those changes would require the project to come back to the planning commission for, you know, a revised approval or a separate approval. Your approval tonight would be based on the plans permitted, subject to all those permits being obtained as submitted.
Thank you.
Minus any conditions you place on it.
Mr. Iaquino.
As one planning commissioner, I feel we, if we do require the tree mitigation of Section 36-723, that we are overstepping our boundaries. Because again, this is a private road and it is under a certain act of the land division. And I do not ever want to require over what our ordinances are requesting as in 36-719, the private road driveway regulation. Reading that, I just don't see how we can require them to do the tree mitigation. I see all the rest of the engineering review, all the other required permits per the state. But I just, I'm not, I can't in good conscience vote to push them to do the tree mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iaquino. Ms. Infante.
I just want to bring up, I agree with Mr. Iaquino that we don't want to overstep what our ordinances have delineated. At the same time, I think we need to act in line with the intent of the ordinances. And in my mind, you build a road to something. And usually you've built your house and then you're building your road to it. If we remove all of those trees, we've removed the trees that would have to be mitigated when the house is built at the end of the road. I just think that there's an intent here behind the ordinances that is not, it's difficult to implement and stand behind, given they were asked to approve a road before we're approving also what the road goes to because of the issue of the mitigation of the trees, which is something that is really valuable in this area. The Washtenaw landmark tree, you know, regulations are admirable. So I don't know.
Thank you. My other concern in just generally reviewing the ordinance that we're speaking of and the requirements, and a mitigation plan says a mitigation plan shall be submitted to the township planning commission. So I guess in other, in other words, Mr. Lippens, my thought was that when I saw language in the review regarding tree mitigation, I went to that section. I see, okay, there's some other steps. Before you get to tree mitigation, what happened there? And then it's really not an administrative option. The ordinance is saying it's a planning commission, it's a planning commission duty. So just based, if I were to accept that, okay, I'm good with us not pursuing anything more other than the tree mitigation. I still feel that that is a responsibility of the planning commission, not administrative responsibility. So you see where I'm coming from is that even choosing which avenue I want to go, I still have concerns either way. So that's why I wanted to voice that tonight also.
May I comment?
Sure.
So, yeah, I agree. I guess the intent in the approval would be for you to require that the 37 trees be mitigated. We provided some guidance that they be mitigated on the sites according to, you know, to create screening. And that, you know, we felt that that would in a sense be a mitigation plan, that you would provide guidance in your approval that would require an administrative review. And then I could come back and report on how that mitigation plan that you in a sense approved by a condition tonight was implemented. However, I think the distinction, Mr. Chair, that you make, that you would like to see that plan in advance is absolutely something you could request as part of a motion this evening. And I concur that it makes sense to want to review that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Lippens. I do, if anyone else has questions regarding the process or the things leading up to where I was, does anyone have any? Mr. Kuzno?
I guess I'm just curious why this project isn't being submitted as an overall site plan and what the future plan is for this thing. And that's, it is, I was confused, okay? I'm an engineer. I couldn't even tell you where this thing was if I didn't know that Jomar was off of Ellsworth Road. The vicinity map is useless. It's a box on the county of Washtenaw. It shows no roads, no nothing on it. And I was just curious, and we're just continuing on, we're making an additional private road off of a current private road. Is that correct?
Excuse me, Mr. Kuzno. I'm going to request that Mr. Wagner approach the podium so he can answer your questions. And I have some also. So, Mr. Wagner.
Just to answer your question, it's an extension of that existing Jomar Drive. I mean, we can stake it and flag it if you need to see where it is. But there's demand for these industrial lots out in this area. And when this road is approved and built, then there will be, you know, site plans being applied for.
But are you creating parcels right now? Are you creating, is this going to be meets and bounds splits on this thing? Is it going to be subdivided? How are you going to get the?
It will eventually, depending on what tenants sign up. I mean, but there is demand. That's why we're here. We wouldn't be here, you know? And I know you're, Mr. Chairman, you're going to ask me some questions. But I did want to state, and I know you're going to act on what you're going to act. But, and I guess it's been read. But the ordinance does say that, you know, your natural features, you know, ordinance, mitigation is required for site plans or plats. It does say that. And we did get a letter, a review letter a year ago. And we did go through and we addressed every one. Maybe the landmark tree might be the one that we didn't 100% take care of. But that would be the reason why.
In that regard, I mean, since we, the intent is to have lots for industrial purposes, correct? I mean, that's the ultimate goal here, right? It's industrial zoning.
We don't know the exact user.
But it's industrial zoning right now, isn't it?
Right, yes.
So couldn't we make the, and this is probably for you, Paul, the mitigation for the trees? You wouldn't want, that'd be foolish of us to make them, put them somewhere now. Can't we make that part of the mitigation or part of the site plan process for each individual lot to have, you know, divide this thing up, whatever your total DBH is and whatever your total tree count is? Couldn't we spread it around amongst the lots in, above and beyond what they would be doing for landscaping? I guess that's a question.
I think that's one approach. I will tell you, my preference would be to plant the trees now as, you know, one, we don't know when the development will occur. And two, if some of those lots were developed in the far future, there's maybe a lot of time where tree growth could occur between then. And then three, you know, tracking that process, you know, could become an administrative task.
Anything else, Mr. Kuzno, for the applicant?
No, it would be, I am confused a little bit on the plans. It doesn't really show what land it's impacting. Is that box, is that the extent of your property right there or what? How far beyond the end of the cul-de-sac does the property go? I mean, there's no real overall plan. It shows us what the heck's going on there. Even on the wetland plan, there's one that's a little wider out than that. But it doesn't really show us how it ties into the existing parcels that are there. And it doesn't really give me a feel for how it impacts anything around there. So if we got a neighbor, I don't know where that neighbor's house is because I can't tell where it is relative to this property.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, we know the property because, you know, we've been working on it. And he owns it, obviously. But it's 45 acres or something like that. So if you're on the eWashtenaw map, I mean, for me, I guess I lose sight of putting it on paper because I'm, you know, looking on the eWashtenaw. You can kind of click on everybody's property and see.
Yeah, I know. Usually, you know, you've been to the, you've been to the drain commissioner on this thing. Usually they all want to know where we are in the world on this thing. And it's got to be placed somewhere on the map. And it doesn't seem like we've done a very good job in that regard.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
Can you clarify for me? Is the distinction for mitigating natural preservation features that is written mostly for the site plan review specifically and not for private roads? Is that correct? So the problem then comes at some future point when you want to mitigate those features for the site plan, you don't get the opportunity because they're already gone because they went with the private road. So by not mitigating now, we lose any opportunity to do it in the future. Is that correct?
Mr. Lippens, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I would say if your vote to approve or place conditions on approval for a private road, that your bite at that apple comes now. And if you don't, you know, place a reasonable condition to mitigate those trees now, they would would be removed.
Anything else, Mr. Dwyer?
And to the other point I heard, that it would be unreasonable for us to sort of bank those trees that have gone and then require them as new in site plans that come in the future?
My response to that was that it would not be my preference or recommendation, but it is certainly, a mitigation plan is absolutely something that could be considered at the request of Planning Commission.
I'll ask Mr. Wagner. I do have some specifics as to the, so, process set aside, I have some specifics to ask you. As Mr. Lippens' report suggests, the previous site plan, which was a year ago, showed 101 trees to be removed. This plan shows a table with 58 total landmark trees with 37 to be removed. That's a substantial difference and I think if I'm correct, Mr. Lippens, that's a question that you would have, that you're imposing on your report, that's quite a huge difference. So, why the difference and who has actually gone out as far as your representatives and the owner?
Yes.
Who has done this study?
I have a good explanation for that. The 101 trees was taken from an older tree survey. We were working on this in the early 2000s and then we submitted and after we got the, received the planner's report a year ago, we said, oh, we have to, oh, they only require that we indicate the landmark tree. So, before there were landmark trees plus, you know, 50, 60 other trees that now we've removed from that list because your ordinance doesn't require us to identify all the non-landmark trees. We did send a certified arborist out that we have on staff. His name's Ron Ford. So, we did send him out to do this tree survey. I guess I'd like to take the opportunity right now just to point out that we are, you know, there are a number of landmark trees that are being saved and a ton of other non-landmark trees. So, they're, you know, removing these is only, would be a small percentage of all the trees that you see when you're out there. But that is the reason and the truth.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the wetland portion. I see on your site plan, you showed the boundary indicated by the dash dot line. What's your estimation acre-wise? Or do you have an exact acre on this whole site that you're submitting to us as far as wetland total acreage?
The wetland...
Do you have, do you have an idea? Is there a calculation?
We're impacting less than a third of an acre because we wouldn't be able to get a permit to do anything more than that. But we do have a, I didn't bring it with me, I brought electronically, we have a full, you know, wetland mitigation, not mitigation for a wetland delineation report that we had done. That's one reason it took us a year. We had to do the infiltration tests, the wetland delineation and all those things that identify the trees, but we did have that done in 2017.
Since I don't, the delineation report was not submitted as part of the packet or information to the Planning Commission, does it specify total wetland acreage on the site?
Yeah, you know...
You don't know?
I would have to see if we, we probably didn't even go up and delineate the northmost part of the wetland because we weren't impacting that. So, we delineated the area that we're impacting, so I don't know if we measured, you know, the acreage of wetlands on the site.
Okay. Thank you. My last question that I have on specifics, Mr. McNamara, have you visited the site?
Yes.
Okay. Boots on the ground?
Yes.
Thank you. That's the only questions I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kuzno. Mr. Wagner, unless someone else might have some questions that I may need you to respond to. Mr. Kuzno?
Yeah, I mean, Larry, you just brought up a great point. I mean, it looks like the entire southern, from the curve in the road to the end of the cul-de-sac on the south side, looks like entire, all wetland. Is that, how are you going to get any kind of a site plan on that if it's all wetland right now?
Mr. Wagner, can you please respond?
I guess that's kind of the part of the, I guess, part of the confusion here is like, if you know you've got wetlands you've got to work around, you should probably devise some property lines and figure out what building areas you can work with. And my guess is you've probably done that somewhere, just haven't shown it on this plan, but it seems like you're going to end up with maybe one, two, three, and I don't know what's at the end of the cul-de-sac, but maybe four building sites on this whole thing. Is that, what are you anticipating?
Piles.
Okay. Again, I can't tell because it's too... That was the first one I thought of and then, okay.
Yeah, we actually, back in the early 2000s, we submitted things to the township. So, if you still, I have, I still have the information, but we actually lotted it out. We just don't know that that's how it's going to, if it's going to be that way or not. So, that's why we didn't submit it yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
So, does the MDQ just give you a permit based on the footprint of the road and then every subsequent development along that road then has to go and get another MDQ permit if they're impacting wetlands?
We, our wetland permit application is only for this private road. We did not get anything in addition permitted. So, if they, if it requires a wetland permit for whatever they're doing, they would have to do that.
Anyone else? Seeing none. At this time, I would like, I'll make the motion that we, that we table this review of this until we obtain some further information from Mr. Lippens and possibly Mr. McNamara. I think I made clear what my concern was, so I'll look for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Infante. Any questions on the motion?
I apologize. Can you repeat?
Yes, I can repeat. I'm making a motion to table any decision on the Jomar road extension until we receive more information that I specified previously from Mr. Lippens or Mr. McNamara and possibly the applicant.
I would like to see if it's possible to take a poll of the commissioners to see who is supportive of the mitigation as well, if that's possible.
Well, we could do that separately, but, yeah, I'd like to keep it to this one motion right now. Ms. Chick?
Are we tabling to a certain date so that we're not like looking out into infinity?
In all fairness to the applicant, I'm not, I don't have a date in mind if it can be addressed as soon as possible. I understand all the lengths that the applicant went through to satisfy the first review and I appreciate their time and efforts and this in no ways, you know, intended that to postpone you in any way. It's not my intent. I just want to clarify for the Planning Commission's benefit and the township's benefit and it could benefit you too. But that's the intent. I'd hate to set it for some time in the future and if we can do it as soon as possible, that's what I would be looking at. That's my intent.
Mr. Lippens, is there a time that you feel that would be okay to have this come before the Planning Commission?
I guess I would request maybe a summary of the information that is requested because I kind of have two questions. One, if you're looking for a recommendation from the planner as to whether or not the Planning Commission should require a full natural features review on this, that might be a separate recommendation. Two, if you're actually requesting a full natural features review, that might be a situation where we would have to request additional information from the applicant. So, I guess the distinction that I'd like to make is are you looking for additional information from me or for me to facilitate getting additional information from the applicant? Does that make sense and is that a fair question?
Obviously, I think it would include the applicant for any further information. Perhaps another meeting with the applicant prior to the Planning Commission.
So, based on that answer, I would say a specific date. I understand why you don't want to attach one to your motion.
Right. And I would like to get, I mean, I have, I could take up another hour speaking about what information we should or should not have, but I think I gave my ideas. I think we can address or clarify what we may exactly need in reviewing the ordinance, the process that you've already went through.
I think I understand.
Mr. Iquinto?
Tabling, there's a maximum, I understand, of six months. Is that correct though? When we table an item?
I'm not certain. I would hope that it wouldn't be that long.
I will place this on the first available agenda where I feel like I have an adequate report to make to Planning Commission.
Thank you. So, any other questions on the motion to table? I'll see and then we'll do a roll call. Mr. Zarzaki? Yes? There you are.
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
All, yes, approved.
Thank you, Mr. Zarzaki. Mr. Iquinto, I don't know if you want to continue with your, with yours or not. I think it's all, I think it can be all entailed.
But I think if, again, as one commissioner, I'm not in favor of the tree mitigation and I think it'd be helpful if the engineer knew if there was a consensus of us that do want it or that prefer not to have it included.
Right.
Because again, my interpretation, I don't see how we can, I can in good conscience require them to have it under the private road driveway regulations.
And I guess what I'm referring to is that in my overall question on the process to Mr. Lippens, I think is inclusive of that. I certainly, I want to know, it's an all or nothing, you know, consideration. So, I believe your benefit, your point that you're making is inclusive of what I'm requesting. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate your time. Okay, moving on, we have under new business, election of Planning Commission officers. So, at this time, Mr. Zarzaki, you can help me in making some notes. We can help each other.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Roman for chair.
I'll support.
Okay, have nomination for myself for a chair position supported by Ms. Chick. Are there any other nominations for chair? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll go down each position. So, then I'd like to nominate Ms. Chick as for vice chair.
Support.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Any others? I'd like to nominate Mr. Zarzaki for the secretary position.
Support.
Okay, it's supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any other nominations for secretary? Any others? No. Seeing, we'll go to ZBA representative.
I nominate Mr. Kuzno. What does that entail?
We can, we'll come back to, we'll come back to it. Are there any other nominations? Any others? I'd like to nominate Mr. Iquinto as Parks and Recs representative, supported by Ms. Chick. Any other nominations for that? Any others? None. And I'd like to nominate Ms. Infante for Downtown Planning Group.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick that time. I heard her first. Any other nominations for that? Seeing none. Mr. Zarzaki, we'll go through the list to see who accepts or does not.
One nomination for chair, Mr. Roman?
I accept.
All right. One nomination for vice chair, Ms. Chick?
I accept.
One nomination for secretary, myself, Zarzaki, I will accept. ZBA representative, Mr. Kuzno was put forth as the only person. He accepts. For Parks, Mr. Iquinto was put forward as the only person.
I accept.
And Ms. Infante was put forward as the only person for the Downtown Planning Group.
I accept.
Okay. Thank you. So, that completes A. Am I correct? Not missing anything? Okay. Okay, item B, we have...
Don't we need to vote on that, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Well, I guess so. I mean, there's no other nominations.
We could vote on one whole slate of...
Okay, that's...
But it is proper for us to vote on, sorry.
You're correct. It's my mistake. I'll go back. We don't have to do each one, correct?
You can do a whole slate.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to vote on the nominated positions for the Planning Commission.
I...
Okay, support by Ms. Chick. Mr. Zarzaki, roll call.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
All nominees have been approved.
Thank you. Satisfactory? That's...
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Okay, item B, we have Board of Trustees, a term renewal until 2020 for Mr. Kuzno and Mr. Zarzaki and very glad to have them and appreciate their efforts. Any other comments? No? Okay, C. Board of Trustees, we'd like to welcome the new member, new member, Eamon Dwyer. His term until 2019. Welcome, Mr. Dwyer.
Welcome.
Anything else? No? Okay, did everyone receive the planning, the proposed Planning Commission 2018 calendar?
Number D first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Lippens, go back to D. I skipped D.
Yes, in everyone's packet this evening, they received a 2018 work plan. Many of the things that we did not achieve in our 2017 work plan have been carried over. Say that this is common, you know, we don't do everything in a year, but 2017 was a very productive year. We were able to complete the North Village Plan, able to complete a plan for downtown. We did work on the sign ordinance, which is ongoing, and several other zoning amendments. We have a robust and work plan proposed for 2018. I will take comments on that, suggestions this evening. The two things I wanted to point out, one, as was mentioned in your Board of Trustees report, the board had decided to, at this time, not approve the master plan... report, the board had decided to, at this time, not approve the master plan work to begin. We can revisit that. It's still important. It's on your work plan. We can revisit that in three months with the board, and I do think it's supportive of the zoning work that planning commission has approved to undertake. I will say I added, as a separate item, the adoption, official master plan adoption of the downtown plan and the North Village Plan. Since we're not starting an update, a wholesale update of the master plan, planning commission could recommend proceeding with approving just those elements. They are subarea plans, and were completed as subarea plans. We had recommended that that adoption happen at the same time as a master plan update, but planning commission could make the recommendation to pursue the updating or adoption of those plans at this time, since they are completed documents. The other question I had for planning commission this evening related to the work plan was related to the zoning work that we want to do. And really, my question is in terms of structuring our meetings. I thought it might be beneficial to, to the extent that it wouldn't delay any potential applicants, try to structure our site plan business for one meeting a month, and then zoning review for another meeting that month. I know we've had a couple of meetings canceled, and I think that structuring our work, since we do, we'll have a work plan that's fairly full with the amount of zoning work we want to do in that manner, might be a good guidance with the caveat that we would never delay any applicant from getting on as soon as possible agenda. So I just wanted to throw that out there, as kind of how I would be thinking about structuring your agenda, so that we can dedicate our zoning discussions to be a little bit more of a working session, and then our site plan review or other review discussions to be focused on those cases. And so those are my two ideas, two things to point out on the proposed work plan, and, you know, I'll take any questions. Certainly, planning commission making an adoption or, you know, a motion of approval for a work plan is always a good thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Ms. Chick?
I like the idea of having a structure, and I'm wondering, is there some way, it might be a little difficult looking a whole year out, to like have a calendar established on what we think we might want to work on, on certain calendar dates? It's very important, I think, that we get through the zoning ordinance updates, because that's what everybody's been talking about and asking about most recently. So if we could start that as soon as possible, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that that, we have a proposed scope and schedule that's associated with that project.
Good.
So, yeah, we will be approaching that much in the same way we approached some of the planning work we did last year, where we kind of have a separate scope and schedule attached to it. Yes, so I understand your comment and agree.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move to accept the discussion, or the proposed 2018 community development work plan.
I support. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 11E.
I make a motion to adopt the calendar as presented for 2018.
I support. Any questions on the motion?
July 11th is maybe a holiday. It's my birthday.
Okay.
But I'm good, I'll be here.
Yeah, what's the July 18 and slash 25 supposed to mean?
We have a holiday that gets in there, so you are on top of the next one, so I don't know if you want to go a week, or if you want to...
What, you're talking about the 4th of July?
Yeah, that's the one that pushed it.
To the 11th?
So we either got back to that, planning commission did, or you want to...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I see, so the 4th?
Or the 11th.
Made it the 11th. Yeah, because July 4th is on the Wednesday.
My opinion is the 25th would be better.
Yes.
So we'll go with the 25th? Any other questions? We have a motion, right, on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Wait, I have a question.
Ms. Chick?
Thanksgiving in November, what day is that fall on? Uh, no, I think you're okay there. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Thanksgiving would be on the 22nd.
Next week?
Yes.
The next day?
The next day. We would be meeting on the 21st, which is Wednesday. Thanksgiving Day is, I won't, I won't be here either, but...
Any other questions on the calendar? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Everyone receive copy of the Robert's Rules of Order Simplified?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order Simplified as presented.
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions on that motion? Just comments. I'll try to run it as close as possible. I don't think any, no one's an expert on running Robert's Rules.
He's on the wall.
Mr. Iquinto?
I just, I like it, it's concise and simplified for us to live by. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Zarzaki, do a roll call vote.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. In your packet, you should have received the zoning administrator quarterly report from 10/1/17 to 12/31/17. Mr. Lippens, would you like to comment on the zoning administrators' report?
Sure. You know, we're receiving these reports quarterly. I believe the trustees and planning commissioners have been very happy to be receiving these reports. It's, you know, helpful to know that 16 zoning compliance applications were approved. Additionally, there was one case that appeared before the ZBA. Final site plan inspections on several site plans that have appeared before the township. Zoning administrator did begin office hours. It's my understanding that those are going very well. There's a new code enforcement officer that is also working in concert with zoning administration to complete the township's business, and the report there is good. I think everyone's enjoying having that support, and we're also coordinating applicant outreach and applicant meetings around the zoning administrator's office. There has been an effort, too, to provide assistance from me to preliminary applications, and we've been scheduling that during our office hours as well. So on many of the days when the zoning administrator's been in the office, I've been there as well. So this is a part of our effort to increase services and customer relations in the township, and we're happy to have begun that work or increased our efforts in that regard since the last report. Yeah, I think that's a good summary. Do you have any questions about the report this evening?
Any question, Mr. Iquinto?
I make a motion to accept the zoning administrator's quarterly report as presented.
I'll support that. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Dryer?
Yes.
The passes.
Thank you. Everyone receive copy of the minutes from December 6, 2017.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and dispense with reading.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Final call to the public. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission, please step up. Three minutes, please state your name and address clearly.
Polly McNichol, 7024 dollar. And I had a few questions when I first came here. Might have got a lot more now. When and why was this changed from RTM to industrial? He kept saying industrial. So since I lived near there, that scares the daylights out of me. Can any of you tell me that? It's not RTM anymore?
I can't, I would...
I was wrong. I was wrong, I'm sorry. I just thought it was...
It is zoned RTM.
Oh, because he kept saying industrial. It's a big difference.
It's zoned RTM.
Okay. And I can't help but wonder how he, how you could approve a road without having site plans, you know, because this was mentioned, well, we wouldn't build there because it's wet. Yeah, do we have that on a plan? We don't. So I don't know how you could approve a road without site plans and seeing where he would or wouldn't build, and, you know, that's just his word. And everybody kept mentioning trees. So my questions about these are mitigating trees. I mean, are they oak trees? Are they spruce, pine? This makes a difference. If they're yay big around, are they going to put another tree that big somewhere else? I don't think so. When they mitigate trees, will they be the same species, or are they going to be pine seedlings? These are important issues. And about the wetlands, I didn't hear, are they going to mitigate the wetlands? Did I miss that? No, no mitigation of wetlands, because they don't have to? Does anybody, has anybody addressed the protected waterfowl that are in there? Because they are protected by the, is it the Waterfowl Protection Act? The sandhills that are in there? And what determines an essential wetland? Do you all know that? No? Okay. I don't know that either. Let's see. Oh, and he mentioned it's a private road. Is that private road the same as if I put a road on my property that's private? Is a private road like a single-family private road? Is it different considerations? Because it is going to be a commercial road that the public will use.
Ms. McNichol, you have, I know you have a lot of questions that I'll gladly answer after the...
Okay, then I'll just, do you want me to talk to you after?
If you'd like, if it's strictly related to your questions, I certainly will, and your time, you have your time.
All right, and I don't want to waste all your time.
Sorry.
Thank you.
No, I don't, I didn't mean to cut you off, but if you have particular questions, it's not like a Q and A, it's a comment, public comment, but I can answer any questions you have after the meeting.
Dave Gordon, 5558, so it's comments, I can't tell jokes, or do dance routines, or something?
It's comments.
Just comments, all right.
He'll hit the red light if you do that.
You can do a dance.
Well, I'm not that good a dancer. If you'll play the music, Sammy, I'll dance. I was very encouraged to hear the planning commission talking about the value of trees as part of the natural features ordinance. I don't think this conversation would have taken place 10 years ago. So that's very exciting to know that there's a recognition by this planning commission that the community values its natural features here. Thank you very much, and way to go, fast meeting. Good night.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please state your name and address.
Carol Short, 6770 Nala Road. The only comment I wanted to make is, the only concern I have as a resident of the area is, it's already super wetland that we have around there, how that's going to impact our flood levels from them, you know, taking, filling in the wetlands and all the low spots that they have, then their water's going to drain towards our low spots that we have, which then rises our level and could put our houses at potential flood level. I mean, we don't know any of that, but those are the concerns that I have and just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from commissioners. Mr. Kuzno?
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Are we going to get any kind of update on the RFQ for the...
It just went out.
The RFQ just went out? Oh, I thought that went out a long time ago.
Yeah, we didn't too, but it just went out.
Okay. All right, that was my only comment.
Mr. Iquinto?
Thank you. The Michigan Pond Hockey Classic will, is scheduled to take place February 9 through 11 on Whitmore Lake. That is the nonprofit event to raise funds for youth athletics. You can find out more information and to volunteer and/or to play in the event, or come out and be social at michiganpondhockey.com. Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to note that it is really great to have the zoning administrator and our planning commissioner, or planner, in the offices now. It's a huge benefit to the community as well as the township, and I really appreciate the work that they're doing, they're doing a great job. And actually, I have a question as well. Do we know what's going into where the store that...
Quanis was at?
Pizza or headquarters or what? Or another pizza? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Mr. Zarzaki?
Now we'll specify the comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer? Ms. Infante?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. I don't have any comments. Announcement, the next regular meeting will be February 7, 2018. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll support. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.